One TV Special Report
Oo, thank you Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Kanaan, man ba? Bahay basa resolution, Madam Chair. Ah, matup pa, na atay resolution, wa sila kadawat OKP ang market. Sir, ang kening pagimula to resolution, Madam Chair. If we tay maghimutang resolution, from SP, papirmahan ni Mayor dito rataman, or atom kadungdalan, ang paghatot sa opisya posible dito 'yung araw mooy, mo gamit, mooy mo implementar sa mga resolution.
Kita mo for this?
Kita mo for this? So, why nga, wa marakabuti lang, kasi lang mag implementor.
Kung ang responsibility ko ng hierarchy, hierarchy of, from the TV with May, nakalisin si Ma Bibet, diba? So, sir pa, being the market supervisor, if delay na.
Dito nila. Therefore, ah, kiling tanan, mura ang lapses anitua sa market supervisor, kano nga wala kang abot ang maong resolution dito sa mga taong atuwa dito ng kapita.
May ito naasya, as na mabangkan.
Kaya, ang ako po ikanugang, Madam Chair, if resa Friday na amay mukha 'yung kaigil, panangit, kun naa magit sila diha, ku panangit pawaon ku sila. Ang nakakusin, Madam Chair, kena 'yung mga sakyanan, nga dilik upak-umapalit naa antagya residente sa palipot, sa public market, nga naa i-parking sakili rapo sa dalan sa atom mercado publiko. So, mahanyo na sila, Madam Chair, ka, silik lang po tunta, lungkay naman to pa naunang iapiha, namang dito pilang ng mga sakyanan, ka, na diha binti posipin. Naayon, kaya wala sila i-parking irya.
Si Bina, si Kaya, kaya.
Oh, tulog, kabuo.
Na parking. Pero maayon sa grahe, garahe.
Ang naabot sa Ra'gas Park, yung upak, or tulog, or upak, kabuo, na ang dihimong grahe ang Ra'gas Park.
Ina may ito.
Menggandang manapu, pwede, mukha na okin sarap, pero.
Na ayaw mo.
Naanas na.
Sa mga ganan na sila, ching.
So, ano kana siguro, Madam Chair, ka ma, kanaan mga tawagan na, ato lang po ng mahanyo nga ayaw, naman ginobyak, while na construction pa, ang construction ng public market, kaya karon dilik napo kayo mga sa gabal sa traffico, naayay ka parkingan, kato ato mga kay soonan, kaya naangar may pelanungga, kaya ningol, kaya tuwa nasias, municipality sakarin ng mercado. Ako po, Madam Chair, sakang kabain, kurwa paya kung gini kanan, kaya nungul diyan ng kapita, ato kuku sakarin, dumulit mo kuda ako, ang nangdiyan ng kuku akuan takay, maka pabalit kusbe kano, ato uparking sebalay, maka subay pa kusakun, gini kanan ito, sukun ako ban, siyung yo ko nga dilik, kaya luwakin karen, besan pa, magdupa-dupak ka ito sakarin, uparking, ang imo sakyanan. Posipin then, hanai-han, so, ano kana siguro, Madam Chair, kur mahanyo na tos.
Sige.
Thank you.
Pero, nun naa adyag ang market supervisor, so maaway, mananini, Ayriyan, Dayan, under manaanin mo ang market. You do something?
Unfortunately, mura kita na, karon paas salamat eh, pero, karon papod ko nakabasa sa resolution, so, karyo.
Dapat sayo, tagaan ko si Dayan Ha, kaya, ang market handle manas mido-mido.
Ang akong last maramember, katung gamiting may nga, ang problem ang tato is about ato mga motorcycle, kanaan medyo na sila i-parking sa traffic, so, oto ang solution nga, walaan itong sa Ra'gas Park nga, ang dayan. So, moto, ang akong maramember nga, ang ato sa Ra'gas papun, ang ni balinin ng Dayan Ha, sa pride, as the result of ang lasa, so, wala siyang pagbanganay resolution pa. Anyway, ah, so, expect you to know, per, kwan naa ang mga instructions ba?
Nawang binan.
Kung nahimauan pa na ko, na to pa din i.
Wala din.
Iper to, so, nakuwan, dayon siya na monitor, dudutan nga sila, duday tatanan, so, ah, kadi kayo napuana pa, napuana na, bago din i-implement.
So, na dayo, nasayipan po ni, directions po sa market supervisor, napamantay niya 'yung.
Anyway, ah, at least nakuwan po ako, sa ilaha mga resolution, kaso po, kano, ah, di pinut, nagpasabot magit po sila, na dilis sila kanaan dito, kaya, ato lang ina, ilaha rin, mas kapay pa rin, kaya, naka trafficin sila dito rin, kung mas dagat, siguro po sila diha na mag-display.
Oh.
Wala nga bilis.
Madam Chair, iba sa tong sabo, dilik naman kayo, 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 ang butang diha, during ang magdisplay, pwede pagka, galing as bibi ka naman tayin, so, ilis limited, okay, okay, ng magdisplay, para mga tao luwuli ha, pwede, mas nas, pagka diha, na tos sila butang every Friday, munguso sila, ng extent sila o someday, so, oman tong sabo, o manang, depende na kita, kung masugdan na kita na diha, na mabigo mga, mausa sila tanan, mabibo kita siya.
Sige, Madam Chair. Si Ken Ha, bale, bale, na kaya ni Alibyo, mamay. Hahaha, dili ching, sa basin niya, pero, kabayo ko, mapak, namay mayin mo, alibyo na kita, kana. Eh, so, layos kala po dana, oh, kung lilikay, kaya, subutu ba to si Mayor, once, ito, ato lang, na itaong bibid, kanaan, ilang sakyanan si mga okay-okayan, lilikay mapuno rito, ato ba, ilang trak.
Di na po, ato mga residente na na.
Oo, malakol.
Nagpark every day, na instruct naman po si Ma Bibet na, ang instruction ato usually is, kulitahan dito sila parking fee, ano man.
Nung sunod, umutana, at handang iipon na niya, eh, ang issue, the issue, oh, kaya, action po, ang ipanong na tulis po, kaya.
Pilit na to 'yan to sa FBI, okay, di naman di sa, or kailan ang gabi, ah, sa tour din, ah, after several days, ilaw ka days, bilya sa kailan, oh, ang klare, betawa, no, teknika 'yung maso, nati, tagatwari ready, ang mga sabo, this will, fighter gear. Ay, pa, pangit ba 'yung resolution?
Madam Chair, kanaan mga residente nga, na resolution, ah, na resolution.
Kaya, kaya, na wala, say edition, kaya, kaya, na say edition, nasa oras, o bilang, kala, kaya, gumon, yung, muksi mong balay, eh, monimuk, eh.
Toto, Madam Chair.
Onside, action dihin mo sa municipal resource office, kana.
Masigwa.
Kaya, ang resources na man dapat man na magpadal, ang demand letter, kano, wala likuan, so, kung wala kay action, di ba, sa sabo, naman, dery, mura, three years ago, two years ago, na, ang decision, na, na tracking, ipadala nga ng mga, kanaan, isos, sa edition decades, padala nga, ang demand letter, ano mo tanan, karon na, may action dihin.
Madam Chair. Yes, in the next one.
Kasi, moto, nare sa unan kita, Madam Chair, nag excuse sila sa edition, pero, wala nila di paglaksan, to, wala nila di endorse sa police station, to, sa may mahinu, sa may, di man ako matita, ama, madalhan, so, ano, naitapok before, mukhang di usap ni Time, ni Chief Dunors, mo gitoyan, di kamo, eh, ah, mo gire kamo, eh, so, sila, kung sao, wala mo, nga, wala man eh, wala sila di endorse dito sa mua, so, wala sila di mahinu, siguro, let's, time na karon nga, magmatik, magmunta, eka na sila, kaya, balota nga, ang department ya, na software, pulis ng masam, ay, balona sila sa malabo, pero, since, mura, wala, kasi tayang may lihi mo, sa ato department, wala yun, sila putinun nga, na time.
Amo, ganito, puy mata. Laki-laki. Siguro, ah, since you are eating so much time, no, for this party, oh, pwede, no, butay pa rin, ang galing siya is committee. Can you do something na lang, no, Dayan, Ching, kaya, wala, pwede tawag, kasi committee si Bibet, kaya, Kuya, hindi siya kawan, no? Yan din ni siya ang responsibility, kasi, especially, kaya, nakadawat sila, di, na motoo sa resolution, na atong ipadala, talaga Ra'gas Park, pwede, wala na. Talaga Ra'gas Park eh, so, then, kaya, money, bigay, so, can we excuse na, dako, Dayan, eh, kwan, Munching, huh? So, ah, mo, monitor na medyo tong kapita, Dayan, alam na, ah, Dayan, Munching. Okay, so, can we, can somebody move for the suspension of what? Si Mayor wants to, ah, to, to, fine, kuya Sigas, eka tawag na lang, bigay.
Madam Chair, I hope you move to spin.
Madam Chair, ka. So, sige, so, siguro, mga, 30 minutes, siguro, na, suspension, 30 minutes. Basta na lang kasi, anyway, because, wala ng money, so, maliw, kwan, wala paalis na, okay, so, let's hear committee report from the committee of events.
Committee report, that finance, agenda one, letter request of Mayor Samuel Karuhino for the inspiration and accountability of good financial governance. The other side, the request is always valid for investigation through a community thing to suffice reporting reports this office has received regarding the Latin market collection survey from the year 2017. Two letter from the municipal mayor dated September 3, 2024, requesting the office value for a resolution to appropriate funds amounting 1,917,000 for the completion of tennis courts beside working for his sports as cultural center. Three, dated September 12, 2024, requesting the office value for a resolution appropriating funds amounting 500,000 for the construction of canal that runs in the area at the side of the municipal gym at the back of house and vice. Four, letter from the municipal mayor dated September 26, 2024, requesting for legislative action through and as the resolution of the following parts, support and receive a resolution number three. Dating September 24, 2024, to with resolution adapting the annual investment program CY 2024, five number three. Realizing the appropriation of PAP's budget under 5% Municipal disaster risk reduction management fund prior years amounting 90,000 for repair and maintenance of city 80,000 and procurement of first aid kit 50,000. Realizing the appropriation of PAP's funded under 20% of the F of CY 2024 amounting 1,917,000 for construction of canal back of house and vice. And supplemental budget number two of new roof fund amounting 230,694.61. Subliminal budget number three general fund amounting 5,635,575.68. And number five, letter from the municipal mayor dated September 27, 2024, requesting the office value for the passing of operation ordinance number four to approve supplemental budget number three of general plan, supplemental budget number two of new roof fund. Findings, in the agenda about the canal and house vice, besides January 15 and June 10, the total amount program worth is 500,000 and will be charged as 5% in the trust fund. At the last meeting, it has been discussed that the budget won't be 1,200,000 round from the original 2 million. Therefore, the remaining balance is 800,000, allocate an additional 370,000. The 370,000 needed for the tennis court will be sourced from the loan organization and can be safely allocated to the tennis court project. By November or December, this project will be realized since this project is binding in handy. We have new continuous budgeted for December during the finance committee meeting, several groups of regarding dispositions were discussed. However, due to limited budget and business constraints, the funding priorities for December as follows. First one is GPT, booked by the rather than 560 offices, G10, midway three, S213, and definitely LWB USG18. According additionally, we have budget allocations for fuel, oil, and for gas on salary for child order. We also have other info only allocations due to the Rana Festival and the upcoming charity day celebration. Currently, Rana is facing a funding shortfall in the promosas. However, this will be adjusted since the funds have not yet been separated. The priority for the additional budget number three is the salary increase, among other items, with a total amount of 5,635,575.68. Our funding charge includes a remaining contract for last year totaling 1,980,000 as well as the BE savings that have not yet been fully utilized as of October. The salary increase will be based on applicable salary rates, the newly sponsored safe purpose, the first grant as our ideal, three seven funding for one utility worker while physician under Wasto. The total amount for this fund is 233,538.65. However, there are currently no paid compensation you do, and that's why overtime pay is included. If average December their benefits, that's the only main thing to get funds for benefits. Because it is not allowed to get funds for savings of the general fund, just provide the new fund, it must be equal, according to Ma Bibet. There were 185 GO, 131 regular, and cash 190. Regarding the market collections, there have, there have been mixed reports regarding six months due to repeated collections. Being overlooked or neglected, nothing exists. Additionally, the repeat update indicates a delay in the holding phase. In some cases, remittances might not occur for an entire month, while others, they remain in the first or last make of the month. Based on the China's data, there's accountability that collections were mixed during the pandemic. The collection patterns during the closely resemble those after the economy returned to normal levels. It remains questionable whether the records were genuine or complicated as the provided documents were incomplete. Given the circumstances, Sir Munching is not directly involved in preparing the reports. He always signs the debt. Michelle is the one who makes the report, and so, results, he cannot verify the accuracy of the cash he gets or his reputation set. As of today, there are still unpaid collections, even though some individuals have already retired. For the record, there are still unidentified remnants and default record that remain unexplained to this day. In the collections, this latter house and it is so many, it has been identified that the remnants of collections just immediately and not daily. It has also been noted that the sharing of market reports are limited every other day. Recommendations, they have assigned a conference before in relation to the new law and general fund. The revision of the AIP states that approval must be obtained by October 7, 2024. This will allow the account to release the supplemental budget proposition by October 14, 2024. In the resolution to AIP under local development fund number two, the title must be changed into construction of one E house this day. If there were a place that's not committed to the set up, it must be sanctioned and reported to the HR to imply action to avoid unnecessary violations around two weeks. The collection, who mark, the best outer house, who valid in the market, must be daily and not weekly. The committee suggests, depending on committee judging to invite connect collectors, heads, and also the person who make reports to hear their side that'll trace their process. The meeting ended at 3:20 PM in the afternoon, signed approved by Honorable Tafong Junior, Honorable Ubok, Honorable Intaga, Honorable Nagy, and Honorable Farmilin of third.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I move from committee level, Madam Chair, I endorse the committee report to second reading for delivery, Madam Chair.
Saan? Okay, uh, si Kanden, so, any, uh, comment, remarks, objections, okay, hearing none. Okay, so, let's proceed, wala na eh, committee? Napa. Naka, yung papila niya to bana, naang, Madam Chair. Which one? Uh, committee on economic. Can I rehia, lahi ang kwan? Any, uh, comment? Committee last time, na eh, problema, Madam Chair?
Proceed, proceed.
Any? Committee on economic enterprise, proceed.
Committee report on local economic enterprise, subject operation of the restaurant, and two issue about scouter house. The meeting started 9:48 in the morning, prayer was said by Nisha Rosita Kibey. The pertaining officer, Honorable Jusel Sumaba, PKR committee forum. Honorable Sumaba greeted everyone and acknowledged the presence of all toxic members and occupied personnel. Findings, one, post some fights does not manage the restaurant, they only supply the saris cuts for the restaurant. However, regarding management, Montaya's race or designated meal is assigned to them. The employees at order to Delahaina Resort and Eco Park, from our list of annual pledge, are claiming one month salary. However, they are closing the restaurant every Sunday, which is supposed to be part of one month of vacation, and Montaya is not aware of this closure. We need to purchase a bargaining club for the Delahaina Resort and Eco Park so that employees won't have to manually write their DTR anymore. As of now, the damages to the latter house have still not been repaired. The water system scouter house needs to be overhead to ensure proper water distribution. Recommendations, the committee agreed to move a resolution to her position for the supervisor assigned to Delahaina Resort and Eco Park. And according to Mr. Dampore, their delivery was not solid, and the city input show that the owner received their meat completely. The committee ended at 12:00, 6:00 in the afternoon, signed approved by Honorable Sumaba, Honorable Miston, Honorable Palais, and Honorable Bujungan.
Madam Chair, yes, and this issue, Madam Chair, maybe, uh, I would like to move this for second reading, Madam Chair, order for us to pass resolution. That was a dream for our committee meeting, Madam Chair, for the hiring of position for the supervisor assigned to the Delahaina Resort, Madam Chair.
Okay, juristic Kanden, comments, objections, hearing none, okay, for second reading. Um, next night, is it? Committee on laws? Wala na si Kaden.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Wala na? Okay, kung wala na din, let's proceed to the first reading. Do you want to read?
First reading, that are a resolution number four dash 24 of barangay gala, reprogramming the amount of 150,000 pesos from trust fund budget 23 for construction of tents of the covered court.
Madam Chair.
Honorable Tafong.
Ateng, Madam Chair, resolution number 04, that's pretty good for barangay gala, I move from first to second, second to third, third to final, Madam Chair.
Please, Kanden, remarks, comments, objections, hearing none, and motion to.
These is second endorsement, barangay resolution number 18 dash 24 of Guangikan, a resolution to turn over the allocation and management of water assets to the barangay. And the question for the dashboard, by the San Duriang, Dayan, of this municipality. The most manager, manager, Yodo Sakatan, recommended for approval of the resolution of barangay Guangikan.
Okay, so, do we have the, the recommendations, huh, from the Wasto board? Other than the recommendation of the manager?
Madam Chair.
Because, okay, shai, we need the, the resolution of the Wasto board.
Nana, na, na taplo na ni Madam Chair sa.
Dali.
Pero, dapat to na eh, Kaya, Madam Chair, most.
Dapat na, kaya, kwan na.
Resolution mo la.
Kanaan, duna, diba, siya. Pwede man ayaw, sa Wasto board, o solution.
Nani ang manager mo eh.
Nadili siya, kaya, mo. Oh, wala ko may tali'to. Sige ha, so, if can wait, one, one more session.
Okay, I can see, barangay resolution number eight, series of 24 of Casinas and Agustin. A resolution reprogramming the amount of 80,000 from the 5% BTRRMS, unappropriated balance of year 2021, 2022, and 2023 to purchase the handheld radio 20,000, fine for 20,000, and for the maintenance of rescue vehicle 40,000.
Madam Chair.
Honorable Palais.
Thank you, Madam Chair, barangay resolution number eight, series of 104 of barangay Casila, San Agustin. I move from first reading, second to third, and final approval, Madam Chair.
Second. Okay, sa Honorable Palais, the motion for the approval of this barangay resolution, number eight, series of 24 of Casinas and Agustin on first reading, and move to second reading. Final?
Final.
And the final approval, okay, so, we being our rules. Juristic Kanden, advice, comments, objections, hearing none, motion to. Okay, for second reading, uh, we cannot, you know, discussions yet, Honorable, Honorable Tafong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, for consideration, Madam Chair, no, the, I move from second to third and final appro, approval of resolution adapting the investment program to the year 2024, revise number three, Madam Chair, from second to third and final approval, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, Honorable, the move is for the approval of the revised AIP?
AIP.
2024.
2024.
So, that's the revision number.
Three.
Be already, okay, for, uh, move, the motion is for approval, no, from second to third, to final, no, maybe our, there are also. Juristic Kanden, already?
Second.
Second, already, remarks, comments, objections, okay, hearing none, motion is approved. Okay, so, third and final?
Third and final reading, multiple ordinance number 24 dash 17, introduced by Honorable Artis Miston. An ordinance rating agro equal to recent context no demo site, barangay kilabutan saan na, to Delahaina, sa Sabse Deta.
Wala ba di drop? Final drop, ready? Wala na, final drop. Honorable Miston, dada. Wala na ni, pwede ka, tali'ti. Okay. May gusto, wala na. Okay, may gusto, balik, balik orang, diba, balik orang. Have you already reviewed this one?
Yola, spake, wala tay, bangan ro. Barangay, kwan na, ka, kita, yes, ka.
Madam Chair.
Kaya, mawagin do, yes?
Uh, for consideration, Madam Chair, na, 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 sa, uh, final approval, and then, we have visitors, no? Uh, complete, sir, Madam Chair, for consideration, Honorable, the other, the Honorable Miston, uh, Pinti Natri, or the Honorable Sigidas, by next session na lang, finalize, complete na ng municipal ordinance. For consideration, okay.
Okay, okay, si Kanden, okay, so, let's proceed, uh, no, si Kanden, so, any no objection, hearing none, motion is approved. Okay, so, any, uh, business matters, wala na?
Madam Chair.
Okay, iske, wala, you have a report?
Madam Chair, I, so, report ako, Madam Chair, kaya, I, coming, yeah, next week, ang mga activity, kaya, iske, kadi, dito sa Baliamas, si Pimo, mga year, and, eh, bu, sa, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable, uh, paga, IP, matters?
Madam Chair, uh, lalakian yung nga, program ni activity sa haro ng luma, uh, haro, kana, haro, kubertipin, dito sa, kubertipin. Kung wala, yung, sa kana, Madam Chair, sa, sa.
Saman mo, makakaroon na, kwan?
DPD, DPD, saman, kaya, sa, kataba.
Uh, okay, dala musta, okay, okay, so, wala na, that's all, other matters?
VCL matters, Madam Chair.
VCL matters?
Thank you, Madam Chair, good morning, sir. Uh, regarding sa Tuang VCL Congress, sa aming subsidiary chapter, uh, mula ng, siguro, ta, sa final na, schedule, um, sa, final, siguro, siguro, may, uh, mura, kapulo na ng, na, na, schedule, pero, uh, siguro, may, this month, October, uh, ma-finalize, kabit, ang, schedule, kasi, siguro, harong, katupusan, mga, VCL Congress with the mayor, and the vice mayor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, okay, wala na yain?
Madam Chair.
Honorable Bayan?
I hope to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Napi, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Napi, Madam Chair, nag-aayon to visitors, Madam Chair.
So, sige, ako, napi, sa troder, napi.
Barangay, official, o barangay, para, Madam Chair.
Hindi, ako, bu, Madam Chair, pero, muna yung, mali, yung, kapitan, oh, kinangan mga, insosion, ang himtoyo, or, uh, say na, bigay, okay na, sige, Honorable Palais.
Madam Chair, before adjourn, Madam Chair. Before adjourn, Madam Chair.
As na, yung, other matters.
Ang, kaya, ang concern na isa pa, uh, ta, barangay na ika, yung, pwede na to, magtagaan, paalis, no? Uh, mga former barangay kagawat, sa na ika, yung, nado, disgrasya ng golte, susyens, mura, mixwell.
Sige na lang, lilith na lang, lilith na lang. Uh, kung saan may, kwan, pakilple, na disgrasya, dayuna, sa Mars?
Uh, hindi, o, system is.
Uh, hindi, o, system miss.
Uh, hindi na, na, system miss, wala, yung, great, na, system, wala na. Sige, so.
Thank you, madam Chair, the existing katong division from the, from five thousand, uh, the, mga five thousand, from the.
Thank you, madam Chair, madam Chair, ask me, ask.
Tapos, ay, dada, tapos, tama, dada, dada, musho, tustro, kasi, yung, yun.
Yeah, madam Chair, uh, also, madam Chair, uh, there will be, dear, uh, the brother of our, uh, one, our constituents, madam Chair, uh, Mister. Alberto Lagas, is sure, ah, madam Chair. Uh, request, eh, uh, Mister Alberto Lagas, madam Chair, request for, uh, Korean assistance, madam Chair, for, for, oh, is, uh, brother.
Sa barana?
Yeah, uh, in, si Mister Alberto Lagas, mo, is, nangayu, hinapang para sa, uh, Korean assistance, eh, yun, madam Chair. Si Mister Manuel Obut Lagas. And, I move, madam Chair, na.
Sige, mapal, na, sa, Honorable, balik, si, nato, Honorable, sa, okay, may.
Uh, I move, madam Chair, na, to, from, Alex, Algar, Alex, the.
So, total, na, is, ten thousand.
I second.
Okay, thank you. Siya, day, remarks, or, subjects, okay, kiningan, motion is approved. Honorable, Balais, na, is, dada, point, dada, dada, point. Yeah, Honorable Balais?
Yes, madam Chair, I hope to adjourn, eh.
Sige, madam Chair.
Okay, so, stay, session, siya, adjourn.